Okay, we'll start the hearing. This hearing of the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission will come to order. Won't you please rise with me to recite the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you all for coming tonight and thanks to Phoenix College for hosting the commission. This is the first public comment hearing of the commission in our second round of public comments, series of public comment hearings. With me tonight, to my left is Vice Chair Jose Herrera, Commissioner Jose Herrera, and to my, that's to my left, sorry, and to my other left, my right, is Commissioner Lynda McNulty. I'm Scott Freeman, I serve as the Vice Chair of the Commission as well. Other Commissioners, our Chair Colleen Mathis and Commissioner Richard Sturts are not here tonight. The idea with these public comment hearings, since there's so many of them over the next three weeks, is the commission sort of divides and conquers, and although the other Commissioners aren't here, I'm sure they're watching. All of these hearings are streamed live on our website, which is azredistricting.org, and I know they're watching live. I know I won't be able to make it to all of them myself, but I will be watching each one of them on the Internet with great interest. We really appreciate everyone coming out to give us their thoughts. The commission has now published two draft maps, one for the congressional maps, the congressional districts, and the other for legislative. And the point of these hearings is to get the feedback from the people, so we can collect that, distill those comments, and then go back to work at either redesigning or rehauling these maps, or tinkering with them, or making the appropriate adjustments to bring us to a point where we have final maps, both congressional and legislative. To comply with federal law, we have a Spanish translator here with us tonight, and he's going to read a statement. Jose, let's see, Carlos Reyes, I believe is here. There he is.
Good afternoon. Vice President Freeman, Commissionados, damas y caballeros, de acuerdo a la ley de los derechos electorales, un traductor e intérprete estará disponible en todas las reuniones de audiencia pública, a fin de proporcionar la interpretación que pueda ser necesaria para los ciudadanos que necesiten servicios de interpretación o traducción. Si necesita la asistencia de un intérprete, por favor comuníquese conmigo. ¿Habrá alguien en la sala que necesita la asistencia de un intérprete? I believe we're good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. And then some more introductions. With us tonight are the commission's lawyers, Mary O'Grady and Joe Kainfield. Also with us somewhere is our Executive Director Ray Blaydean, our, the commission's Assistant Executive Director Christina Gomez. She is here in the back. There we go. We have our outreach coordinators, Lisa Schmeling, Kristy Olson, Sheen Shields, Karen Herman, and Anna Garcia. And we also have our Public Information Officer Stuart Robertson is with us tonight. Also, we have our mapping consultant is here tonight, Andrew Dreschler from the Firm of Strategic Telemetry. He's going to give a presentation to y'all here in a few moments. And did I leave anyone out? Oh, our information, our technology expert Buck Forrest. And everything tonight is being taken down by our court reporter Marty Herter, who is making everything and a set tonight a part of our record. If any member of the public desires to make comment to the commission tonight, you can, in the back, you'll see these yellow forms. These are our public comment forms. Please complete them and get them to Ms. Gomez or any member of our staff, so they can get them up to me. And later tonight, we'll be calling names and having you come up to the podium to provide comment. If you don't want to come and speak to the commission directly, included in the packet that you would have received as you came in is this blue form at the back, where you can complete that and provide written comments to the commission. The commission also accepts comments through its website, which I mentioned, azredistricting.org. You can make comments there, or you can call the commission to let us know your thoughts. I do want to make sure everyone is aware of these, our information packets. Pick them up in the back. There is a letter from our Chair, Ms. Mathis, and a memo sort of describing where the, how the commission has got to this point, explaining the process. And perhaps most importantly, there are color, nice color printouts of the congressional and legislative maps. We'll be going through them more with, during a presentation that Mr. Dreschler is going to provide us with. And I think with that, with those introductions in order, I think I'll turn the program over to Mr. Dreschler for his presentation.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Today, we're here to discuss the draft maps presented by the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission. The draft maps are currently under a 30-day review, and this is a period, this is one of the main reasons we're here today, is because we want to hear the public's thoughts and comments on the maps, and what they like and what they don't like. However, before we get into the maps, we just want to do a quick review of the overall process.
We can't hear you back there. Closer to the mic.
Is that better? All right. The Arizona redistricting process is governed by the state constitution, as amended by the voters in 2000 with the passage of Proposition 106. It stipulates that the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission redraw Arizona's congressional and legislative districts to reflect the results of the most recent census. What are the guidelines of Prop. 106? One, it must comply with the U.S. Constitution and the Voting Rights Act. Two, it must have equal population for all the districts. And Criteria A and B are federally mandated. Criteria C is compact and contiguous. D is respect communities of interest. E, use visible geographic features, city, town, and county boundaries, and undivided census tract. F, create competitive districts for no significant detriment to other goals. We just wanted to go over the Voting Rights Act. Arizona's congressional and legislative districts must receive preclearance or approval from the Department of Justice or a federal court under Section 5 of the Voting Rights Act before they can take effect. The preclearance, to get preclearance, Arizona must demonstrate that the new districts do not discriminate against minority voters in purpose or effect, which means there can be no intentional or accidental discrimination. Under Section 5, Arizona's redistricting plans cannot be retrogressive. The plans cannot weaken or reduce minority voters' rights. The presence of discrimination can be determined by analyzing population data and election So the timeline is for the commission, back in, earlier this year, they set up the commission, and the Commissioners were appointed through a thorough screening process. And on the commission, there's two Democrats, two Republicans, and an independent. Tonight, we have Vice Chair Scott Freeman, we have Vice Chair Jose Herrera, and Commissioner Lynda McNulty. As Commissioner Freeman stated, Colleen Mathis is the Chair, and Commissioner Sturts is not here. First round of hearings, before drawing a single line, the commission held 23 public hearings around the state in July and August to get input from members of the public about issues relevant to redistricting, such as geography, communities of interest, minority voting rights, and competitiveness. Next, we started mapping. The first step was to produce a grid map, which was approved on August 18th, and a part of, and the grid map was required by Proposition 106. And there was two requirements in there. It was to be equal population and compactness. Since adopting the grid maps, the commission has met more than 25 times to consider adjustments to the grid maps to accommodate all the state constitutional criteria. During this time, they received additional public comments and draft maps. Approval of the draft maps on October 3rd for the congressional maps, that incorporated changes based on the constitutional criteria, and then it approved the draft legislative maps earlier this week on October 10th. The second round of hearings, which you're part of today, is we're going to be visiting 25 towns and cities around the state to share the draft maps and receive additional public input during the month of October. Final maps, well, upon completion of the second round of hearings, we will take, in the public comment period, the independent commission will adopt final maps. And the final step in the overall redistricting process is preclearance. Because Arizona is subject to Section 5 of the Voting Rights Act, the district maps must be approved by the Federal Department of Justice or a federal court in Washington, DC, before they can be used for the next elections. We'd like to show the progress of the maps and show how we came to the current draft maps. The map you see here was the congressional map that was approved by the last redistricting commission, and most recently used in the 2010 elections. Per Proposition 106, the commission was required to start with a blank slate, not taking into consideration any previous election results or incumbents. Also, per Proposition 106, the commission started with a grid map. As discussed earlier, the grid map would only take into consideration two of the six criteria, equal population and compactness. In August, the commission asked that two grid maps be drawn, and on August 18th, they agreed on option two seen here. After more than 25 meetings, the commission voted to approve the draft map you see here. Besides taking into consideration the sixth criteria, the commission also took into consideration public comments provided during public meetings. Round one of public hearings, comments mailed in, emailed, hand-delivered, faxed, telephoned, and I'm probably missing a couple more. But overall, there's been over 2,000 comments that helped develop this draft map. As you see here, some of the highlights of the map, you can see two predominantly rural districts, three border districts, two districts in the city of Tucson, five districts that are entirely in Maricopa County, and it avoids splitting Arizona's Indian reservations. Much like the congressional draft map, the legislative map followed a similar process. Here, we see the legislative map that was last, that was developed by the last commission, and it was most recently used for the 2010 elections. Again, per Proposition 106, the commission started with a blank slate. A grid map was approved in August. Similar to the congressional map, the grid map only took into consideration two of the six criteria, that being equal population and compactness. Which leads up to the draft map. Arizona has 30 legislative districts. Each district elects one senator and two House members. The population in the old districts currently range between 155,000 and 378,000. The new draft map has roughly 207,000 to 215,000 per district. To comply with the Voting Rights Act, the draft map includes 10 districts in which minority voters should have the opportunity to elect their candidate of choice. The draft map includes three districts wholly within Pima County, Districts 3, 9, and 10, and three additional southern Arizona districts, 1, 2, and 4. Seventeen districts primarily within Maricopa County, District 12 and 15 through 30, and nine districts primarily rural, 1, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 11, 13, and 14. As we stated, as Commissioner, as Vice Chair Freeman stated earlier, we want to hear your input. You have many different opportunities to fill out, to give us your input. You can fill out a yellow request-to-speak form and provide the commission your input. Examples of input might be thoughts on any of the constitution criteria, the congressional draft map, the draft legislative map. You can submit your input by speaking at the hearing tonight, or filling out one of these blue public input forms, or you can go to our website. Our website, as we've stated, is www.aZredistricting.org, or call us at (602) 542-5221, or toll-free from within the state at (855) REDISTRICT. This is just a quick shot of the webpage, and we just wanted to point out a couple features. You will see that you can review the maps and the Maps tab. The meeting information has meetings of past meetings and current meetings, or past meetings and future meetings, and all recordings of, and streams of the last meetings. And the public input form is where you would be able to fill out some comments on the The final draft maps can be found under the Maps tab, and within that is a tab called Draft Maps. One of the features that you will be able to find is, and this is a, I think, a really helpful feature that people have been, have found useful, to see where, what consists of their district, is the KMZ file, which is also the Google map. In here, you would be able to zoom in and really get a good sense of what your district looks like. This is just a quick screenshot, and you can zoom in further to see the exact streets that surround your community. Also, the commission would like you to stay connected. As we've mentioned before, you can come visit us at your website to draw your own maps, watch current meetings or past meetings, get an update on future meetings, or you can follow us at Twitter at hash AIRC, or friend us at Facebook. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dreschler. All right, the next item on our agenda is the public comment. I have about 21, 22 requests to speak. If you do want to speak to the commission, these yellow sheets are in the back. Complete them and get them to one of our staff, and they'll bring it to me. Given the number of requests, I think we're going to ask that you try to limit your comments to about four minutes, and Mr. Forrest will have a timer, and when you hear the buzzer go off, just do your best to try to wrap up as quickly as you can. If you have written materials, a map, or something else that you want to submit to the commission, our Executive Director, Mr. Blaydean, is sitting right over there to my right, and just hand those materials to him. He'll get them to us, and it'll become part of our record. Again, the purpose of this public comment hearing and the series of public comment hearings is to get your input on the draft maps. So we're really interested in hearing specific changes you may have to these maps, where you think the lines should be moved to and why, or why these lines should remain the same, that they're appropriate where they are. We'd be interested in hearing that as well. If you have any thoughts or ideas on how your changes might impact other districts and how they're constituted, I would love to hear that as well, because it is a complicated puzzle, trying to fit together nine congressional districts and 30 legislative districts, applying all those six constitutional criteria. It has not been an easy task, and I think your input will be invaluable to us. So when I call your name, please come up to the podium, and I'd ask you to please state your name and spell it, so our court reporter has it. Speak directly into the microphone, so that people in the back can hear you, and people who are watching online can hear you as well. And tell us, if you're representing yourself or some organization, please let us know that, and give us the town or county where you live. That would be helpful as well. I think now I'm up to about 25. So, okay, well, our first speaker is Supervisor Mary Rose Wilcox.
Members of the commission, thank you very much. Thank you for being in this lovely historic building, too. We always like to showcase this at Phoenix College. I'm Mary Rose Wilcox, Maricopa County Supervisor, and I'm representing the Hispanic Coalition for Good Government, and we wish to thank you, members of the commission, for the encouraging changes made to the Congressional Donut Map during the meeting in Tempe. We believe that the RSC made significant progress in addressing its prior serious concerns regarding the direction of the Donut Map, the congressional one. As with any progress as complex as this, there, we understand that not all of our concerns will be addressed in one foul soup. What I would like to do is just outline three areas we have concerns with, three kind of major and one minor. On the Congressional District 7 map, 7th Avenue to 43rd Avenue, between Bethany Home Road and Northern Avenue, we believe this should be removed from the current boundaries. And the reason we believe this is because you basically, Bethany Home Road is a dividing line between Washington ESD and Madison ESD to the north of Bethany Home Road and south of the street, Alhambra ESD and Osborne. Additionally, 43rd Avenue and Bethany Home Road going north is a municipal dividing line between Glendale and Phoenix. So we believe we do more. The historic South Glendale area has cultural and historic differences to the areas just east of it. The other area is 32nd Street to 48th Street, between McDowell Road and Thomas Road. This very much goes into line with areas of like needs, and we ask this to be added back into CD 7. The other, Central Avenue to 7th Avenue, between Indian School Road and Camelback Road, we would prefer this be added back in. Again, there's neighborhoods, and this mirrors, more succinctly, the light rail that goes up to this area and kind of ties everything together. The other minor concern is west of 83rd Avenue, north of Bethany Home Road. This had been in the area earlier when you discussed it, and we would prefer it come back in. But on the whole, once again, we're very, very pleased that the Donut Map was taken away, and this was brought forward. The changes that are made are ones that we feel are very good for the congressional. On your legislative map, I have approached Maldev to do an analysis of the majority-minority, and as soon as I get that, we'll appear at one of the other hearings and come. But at first glance, just from my experience, I think that the growth of the Hispanic community is well-accommodated in these areas, so. Okay, that is all. Again, thank you very much, and we serve as a resource. If you wanted any special meetings set up for hearings, we'll be glad to accommodate that. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Dulce Gonzalez.
Hello, my name is Dulce Gonzalez, D-U-L-C-E. Gonzalez is G-O-N-Z-A-L-E-Z. And I come as a resident of South Glendale. First of all, I would like to thank the commission for keeping our community within Congressional District 7 in the latest draft of the map. We have a lot in common with the rest of the communities within District 7, so we appreciate that. However, I would like to ask that the commission remove the area east of 43rd Avenue and the area north of Bethany Home from the current draft. These areas do not share as much in common with the rest of the communities in the district. They're not like historical South Glendale, Central Phoenix, West Phoenix, or South Phoenix. And also, 43rd Avenue provides a natural municipal boundary between Glendale and Phoenix, which would allow for the split. Again, I thank you for keeping South Glendale within District 7, and please consider incorporating these areas into the new map. Thank you for your time, your consideration, and all of your hard work.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Bob Rosenberg. And just so the people know who's on deck, the next speaker will be Brian Abbey. And I'd just ask you, when you come up to the podium, don't be afraid to grab that microphone and get it right up next to your mouth. It'll really help us up here to hear you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the commission, and counsel to the commission. My name is Bob Rosenberg. Bob is spelled with one O. Rosenberg is R-O-S-E-N-B-E-R-G. The last time I met with you was in the Burton Bar Central Library in the Ninopoleum Auditorium. And at that time, I talked about how the atmosphere in the state legislature was much more cordial and collegial. And I talked about how Art Hamilton, who was the Democratic Leader in the House, was the person who led the fight to name that library after Burton Bar, who was the Republican Leader in the House. They were very good friends. Tonight, I'd like to talk with you about the national legislature. Ten years ago last July, I was, sometimes I choke up because I'm an emotional person, and that doesn't bother me. If it bothers anyone else, I hope that they are able to deal with their internal conflict. But 10 years ago last July, I was fortunate enough to be in a very small group, five people, having lunch with former governor, former United States Senator Paul Fannin. Paul Fannin, as those of you who have been around for a while know, was a staunch Republican. When he became the junior senator from Arizona, the senior senator was Carl Hayden, who was a staunch Democrat. Senator Fannin, when he arrived, was 99th in seniority, and his, since everything is assigned by seniority, his office was way over in the distance, in a coat closet. One afternoon, the phone rang, and it was Senator Hayden. Senator Hayden said, "Senator, I understand your office is over there." "That's right, Senator, it is." Said, "Well," Senator Hayden said, "well, I noticed it just down the hall from me. There's some much more comfortable office space. Would you like more comfortable office space, little more elbow room?" Senator Hayden, or Senator Fannin said, "Senator, I am humbled and thankful that you offer me such a gracious offer, but I hasten to remind you that I am 99th in seniority here." There was a long pregnant silence on the line. And Senator Hayden, who at the time was the Dean of Senate, been in the Senate longer than anyone else, Dean of Congress, been in Congress longer than anyone else, President Protem, fourth in line for the presidency, and Chairman of Senate Appropriations Committee. Every dollar this government spent had to march across his desk in order to get spent. Long pregnant silence, and then Senator Hayden said, "Senator, that's not the question that I ask you. Would you like more comfortable office space?" Senator Fannin said, "I would deeply appreciate it." Then Senator Fannin told us, "The movers arrived in one hour." While the two of them served together in the United States Senate, Senator Carl Hayden and Senator Paul Fannin worked together like partners, as partners, doing the people's business for the people of Arizona. When the junior senator, I hear the beep, I'll close quickly, when the junior senator from Arizona was Barry Goldwater, he and Senator Carl Hayden worked together as partners to do the people's business. I'd like to see that kind of cordiality brought back in both legislatures, and that's why I hope that you will do everything in your power to create competitive districts. Thank you, and if there are any questions, I'll be happy to address them.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Brian Abbey, and on deck will be Bill Engler.
Vice Chair Freeman, Vice Chair Herrera, Commissioner McNulty. My name is Brian Abbey, that's Brian with an I. The last name is spelled A-B-Y. I'm here representing myself as a member of the electorate, and I'd like to speak on the issue of competitiveness, the item F on your guidelines. First, let me say I appreciate you coming to Phoenix College. It's a beautiful college here in the center of Phoenix. I live in current Legislative District 11, which is about two miles north of here, and this is very convenient for me tonight. Thank you very much. The issue of competitiveness to me is one of the most important of the guidelines. I believe that, right now, under the current map, I think maybe there are three competitive districts in the state of Arizona. districts in the state of Arizona. I'm not sure how many there are, I'm speaking now about the legislative map. I'm not sure how many there are on the new map, the draft map that you all have prepared, but I'm led to believe there may be seven or something like that. You could say that that's a dramatic improvement over the current map, and indeed it is, and I commend you for that improvement. But I also would like to urge you that you can do better. I think that, I've talked to people who variously estimate that the number of competitive districts could approach ten or twelve in this state. I'm not sure what the exact number would be, but I urge you in your deliberations to consider competitiveness, competitiveness, excuse me, very importantly, because it's, in my mind, crucial. We all know what the political climate is in Arizona. We know of the existing effort to change the way that we select candidates in the primary process, and I think all of this is a symptom of a situation in which we are, we move toward more extreme candidates who are elected in primaries, and we have fewer moderate people who make it through to run in general elections. And this is all part, in my mind, of the competitiveness issue, and I hope that you will, you've done well, I think you can do better, and I urge you to do so. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Bill Engler, who will be followed by Danny Sullivan.
Thank you, Vice Chair Freeman, fellow Commissioners. My name is Bill Engler, E N G L E R. I live in Anthem. I'm addressing you on behalf of myself, but I'd like to start by saying also, I am the Chair of Legislative District Six Democratic Party. The map, and I'm going to speak to the legislative maps. I don't think there's any way you could redraw these maps that would make people in my position, whether they're Republicans or Democrats, very happy. I've been very active in the party for nine years, and after this, I'm going to have to look again to work with new people, as will my Republican counterparts. However, you're not drawing this map for me or any other district chair or P C in the districts. You're redrawing the maps for the people of the state of Arizona. I urge you, because of that, to please look for competitive districts. I know you can do better and still meet the other constitutional criteria. I echo the thoughts of the earlier speakers, because in my legislative district, our legislators are elected in the Republican primary. There are some cases where they're elected in the Democratic primary. That does not lead to good representation for the people of Arizona. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Danny Sullivan will be followed by Gina, it looks like Arts to me.
My name is Danny Sullivan, that's D A N N Y S U L L I V A N. I come representing myself. I'm a resident in the North Phoenix area in what's currently Congressional District Three. Want to thank you all for the hard work that you're doing. It's greatly appreciated. Also, I would like to thank you for coming to the decision to keep the North Phoenix area connected to the Anthem, New River area. Those are definitely communities of much shared interest, and I really appreciate, and I know a lot of us in the area appreciate, the decision you've made to keep those areas connected. I would like to suggest that Scottsdale Road is a very logical boundary on the east side of our district. It's been designated as a boundary for legislative districts, and so it only stands to reason that it would be a very natural congressional district boundary. So I would like your serious consideration to have Scottsdale Road as the boundary on the east side of our district. And also, again, I do appreciate what you did for us in keeping those communities in North Phoenix and Anthem and New River connected. And I know there was quite a bipartisan consensus that also kind of led to that decision, and thank you again for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Okay, Gina Arts, if I'm mispronouncing that, please correct me, will be followed by, looks like Julie Chafee, or Chafen?
Good evening. My name's Gina Arts. I currently live in the Arcadia neighborhood. As an Arizona native and a longtime member of the Arcadia neighborhood, my family's lived in several homes throughout the valley and state. We've even spent some time out of the country, but we always return back to the Arcadia District. It represents who we are. I work in the moving industry, and I, we're constantly redrawing our maps, and I understand how hard it is. It's not an easy task. However, I do know the bottom line is what's best for the customer. We, the constituents, are the customer, and we need to be represented as such. After reviewing the proposed maps and attending the redistricting meeting on Saturday, October eighth, I had to ask myself if there was any semblance of common sense in drawing boundary lines. As a neighborhood, we work together on many issues that affect our entire community. What we, what you proposed would have split the Arcadia neighborhood. I ask at the very least, when you do these boundary lines, that you consider school district boundaries for, instead of splitting neighborhoods in half and separating them and putting them in neighborhoods where there's no common issues involved. At one point, I was very surprised to see that you had split that Arcadia neighborhood into legislative districts. And I do, Mr. Herrera, thank you for saying that it doesn't make sense to have split that and brought the line down a little bit. But I want to at least ask that you please use those district boundary lines when proposing the cutoff. It shouldn't affect, and especially in that Arcadia neighborhood, how you hit your demographics or any of the other points that you need to address when you get there. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I just say your last name?
Arts, A R T S.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Julie, looks like Chafen, or Chafen?
Chafen.
Sorry, she'll be followed by, sorry, I was going to, next on deck is Pamela Petty.
First name is Julie, J U L I E, last name Chafen, C H A F F as in Frank, I N. Thank you so much for allowing this and our opportunity to express our opinions. My husband and I have been residents of the valley for twenty-seven years, the last six in Paradise Valley and the prior sixteen in Northeast Phoenix, where our daughters attended the Paradise Valley Unified School Districts. And we feel very strongly about the connection between our town of Paradise Valley as it links into Phoenix through the Arcadia and the Biltmore areas. This is the area where we've spent time supporting our children with their activities, extracurricular endeavors, shopping, worshiping, working, exercising, and relaxing. When discussing the congressional redistricting maps, I'm in favor of joining Paradise Valley with the contiguous and surrounding neighborhoods of Phoenix, like the Arcadia-Biltmore area. It's our neighborhood, and I feel that there is that community of common interest, that it's compact and contiguous, that there's also synergy within that area. And as one of the gentlemen had addressed, I would ask that you would maybe look at the boundary of Scottsdale Road to work within that area, and possibly even look at like Indian School as a southern boundary for marking that out. I'd ask that you would keep like the north and south side of Camelback Mountain together. I have concerns about working with Tempe and kind of the way that district was sort of put together, but would ask specifically about keeping Paradise Valley with the neighborhoods that touch it, those of the Arcadia and Biltmore region. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next is Pamela Petty, who will be followed by Jeff Winkler.
Hello, I'm Pamela Petty, representing myself, P A M E L A P E T T Y. And like everyone who's come before, I would like to thank you all for your hard work and diligence. Really appreciate it, and especially in the light of criticisms you've received. I was surprised and pleased to find myself in new Congressional District Nine, because so many people in this new district share such similar educational, professional, social, and even economic backgrounds, so I was just very tickled. But I'm really here to talk about Legislative District Twenty-eight. I live in North Central Phoenix, and I'm concerned about the boundaries that you propose. It seems to me, as a resident there, that the district doesn't satisfy either the requirement to include either communities of interest nor the requirement for competitiveness regarding the community of interest criteria. It seems to me that, while I live in North Central Phoenix and have far more in common with people in the Camelback Corridor and with friends in Mentown than with Paradise Valley, which seems to be more closely aligned with North Scottsdale in both social and economic interests. As for the competitiveness in L D Twenty-eight, I'm just looking at your data, and I just started looking at it today. And with forty-two percent Republican registered voters and twenty-eight point two percent Democratic voters, it doesn't seem to be very competitive. Your own competitive index shows a fourteen point six percent difference, which seems to be really very high. So I urge you to reconsider the boundaries in that district for those two reasons, both communities of interest and particularly the, what appears to be a lack of competitiveness. Thank you very much for your work.
Thank you. Jeff Winkler, followed by Karen Garrett.
Mr. Vice Chair, members of Commission, thank you for your service and thank you for your time. I know it's a burden on all of you, and I think all the citizens of Arizona, no matter what they think, appreciate your service. My name is Jeff Winkler, Jeff with a J, W I N K L E R. I would like to address the proposed legislative map. I do believe it's a good start, but I do think there's more that can be done to address the competitiveness issue. The most recent poll of Arizona voters was actually released over the weekend, was in the Republic on Monday, yesterday, and it was commissioned by the folks that are advancing the whole idea of nonpartisan primaries, and I think it's the first time that voters were actually asked about how loyal they are to their own party. And the poll turned up some pretty surprising results. It showed that a third of Republicans and a third of Democrats contemplated sometime in the next five years changing their registration to independent. What does this tell us about the mood of the electorate in Arizona? It tells us that they're fed up with the hyper partisan nature of our politics, both within Arizona and nationally, and they're looking for candidates that will bring us together. That's what, at least what it tells me when I read that poll. Specifically to my community of interest, I live in Phoenix, I live in East Phoenix and in the Arcadia neighborhood in the currently proposed L D Twenty-eight. I would really encourage you to take a hard look at keeping Arcadia in a legislative district that includes the Camelback Corridor. That is really where we live, where we work, where we play, is in the Camelback Corridor along Camelback Road. It would be great to see that group stay together. In addition, additionally, when it comes to city of Phoenix politics and the planning process, we're a part of the Camelback Village East Planning Committee. We share that with our neighbors in the Biltmore, and we have a history of working very cooperatively as communities of interest on city initiatives. So I would encourage you to please consider keeping the, or at least considering, the Camelback Village East Planning Committee boundaries when you're contemplating L D Twenty-eight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Karen Garrett, to be followed by Ken Chavron.
Thank you, Vice Chair, other Commissioners, and everyone else up there. And my name is Karen Garrett, K A R E N, G A R R E T T. I don't know how many people here, but I've almost watched every, either in person or live, meeting that you've had. I was sitting at home when you adopted the congressional map. I was flabbergasted, and I hate to be too negative, but the word is appalled, that you would spend the whole weekend changing the maps and then springing it on them. The people that were there on Monday weren't the people that would have been there to talk about what had been transpired that day. I didn't have the ability to get down there, so today I am speaking to that. First, you put Fountain Hills in, then you take Fountain Hills out, then you put it in, now it's out. That is not taking into consideration their rights to have communities of interest. Fountain Hills has been in the current L D District Eight. They have been part of North Scottsdale. The people that live there work in Arizona, in the Maricopa County area, and now because you've been lobbied, I believe, I don't know this for sure, by flagstaff and other communities that want their communities of interest, you're now taking out Fountain Hills and Apache Junction. This is not acceptable, and I hope that somehow someone will get the point that this is not protecting our rights. And that's basically all I had to say. Communities of interest is more important. I know there's been an argument about competitiveness, but it is to be considered, and competitiveness can be considered if all the other considerations are met, and this consideration for Fountain Hills has not been met. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken Chavron, followed by Barney Switzer.
Hi, good evening. It's Ken Chavron, C H E U V R O N T, very similar to the restaurant on Central. I come as a citizen and also as a former legislator. I represented Central Phoenix, which were in the middle of, for sixteen years. And I want to first give you accolades for everything you've done. Jim Huntworth is a very good friend of mine, and for the last ten years, we've spoken about the trials and tribulations he went through as being a Commissioner, so I definitely know what you're going through. What I wanted to talk about first, I think you've done a good job of going through the map. My concern is what I call the BAT district, which is Twenty-four, and what, a district that I have represented for a long time, and I went through three different machinations of a district. And it seems like Central Phoenix has always given what else anybody else doesn't want, or they try to bring in areas that really have no community of interest. This one does a better job than the existing one. But the challenge is you are bringing in two reservations, both the Salt River Pima and Fort McDowell, into Central Phoenix. So you're taking a district that pretty much has a cohesiveness and bringing in an area that really has no commonality, and you make it go all the way up to the Bee Line Highway, which is great concern. That's not a lot of residents, and I know that you're looking at trying to, you know, create districts that meet certain criteria, but I think if you put that area in Tempe or another one, you would still meet those criteria without really alienating them from the rest of Central Phoenix. Scottsdale is another reason. I heard a person spoken earlier of trying to keep different Southern Arcadia with North Arcadia, and also keeping them within the Scottsdale School District. If you look at the southern part of Scottsdale, which you put in this district, that is a Scottsdale School District, which is similar to most of Arcadia and Scottsdale and Town of Paradise Valley, unlike Central Phoenix, which is mostly made up of Phoenix Elementary, Osborne, and Madison. And so I think by putting those areas, if you could put those areas, whether up in District Twenty-eight, or, so it's not such an odd configuration, I think that would do well long term.
Thank you. Barney Switzer, followed by Ken Clark.
Hi, I'd like to say thank you for your service, and I'm going to speak on competitiveness. If you look at statewide races... If you look at statewide races, you see that Republicans have a 10 percentage point advantage, about 55% of the state. That said, in statewide races, they're close when a Democrat is highly qualified and has a clean record, and when the Republican challenger is not clean. But this gives a sense of where Arizona is, that this has nothing to do with what you're doing. Same is not true in congressional and legislative districts. We can easily find examples of incompetent, borderline corrupt representatives elected in safe districts due to the dynamics of primary elections with too many or too few competitors. Are votes splitting primaries with too many candidates vying for a safe seat, followed by term limits or retirement really the way we want to select our representatives? Competitive districts provide a safeguard against this. Competitive districts are not an advantage for Democrats. They aren't an advantage for moderates and centrists. They're an advantage for sane people. So is this what the draft maps provide? Not really. The drafts offer a handful of competitive legislative districts. Less than half of the congressional districts are competitive. And how are the uncompetitive districts divided? In a state that polls 55% Republican, legislative districts with a 15% spread or more, 65% are safe Republican seats. In a state that is 55% Republican, of congressional districts with a 15-point spread, 67% are safe Republican seats. If you make the assumption that Republicans will still take the competitive districts half the time, that leaves them with over 60% of the congressional delegation and legislative delegation. That's higher than 55%. Okay. That gives Republicans a louder voice than they would get under a truly representative system. But okay, it's an extremely difficult job. I understand that. They already have that advantage. So why are some Republicans upset with these maps? They've controlled the state legislature for decades. Do these draft maps threaten that control? No. If you think about it, it makes sense. There is no such thing as enough for partisans. They follow an ideology that elevates self-interest and greed above all other human values. They will never have enough. They can't be appeased. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken Clark, followed by Gene McDermott.
Evening, Commissioners. My name is Ken Clark, C-L-A-R-K, co-chair of the Arizona Competitive District Coalition. Want to, just general comments. The next 30 days are all about public input, obviously. And what we want to speak to, or I want to speak to, is how to make that public input process a little more user-friendly. The four points in that regard. First, the commission still has not defined competition. The regular user needs this to be able to look at a map and see what's really going on. And the commission 10 years ago did not define competition until it was too late. And then they used the judge-it model, but after all these decisions had already been made, and that was one of the reasons that they found themselves in court. I hope this commission doesn't make the same mistake. If you look at one of the maps for legislative, for instance, you've got this central Phoenix district with this, what I call, an airplane rudder that goes out to the McDowell Mountains. You can look at that, and you can't even tell. There are ways, I suspect, to make that central Phoenix district more competitive, but you can't really tell by looking at the maps or any of the data sheets, for several reasons. There's no executive summary of the data. For instance, I come to these meetings, and there's a nice spreadsheet that shows Voting Rights Act, voting age population, competition measures. Even if I disagree with those competition measures, it's all laid out there for me. When you go on the website, you have one spreadsheet that is a compilation of where different districts break out into cities, and it tells you the Voting Rights Act measure for that city, but it doesn't tell you for the whole district. So if you want to get in here and really dig in and give you guys the specific suggestions that you deserve, it's very difficult to do that, because you can't say, "Well, I can't take from that district because it's a Voting Rights Act district," because it's very difficult to see what's going on. You see what I'm saying? The other problem, for instance, well, the competitiveness spreadsheet as well, shows one type of measure for competitiveness. Now, I understand, even though I'd like to see you come up with a definition for competitiveness, I understand that there are several ways to measure competitiveness. There's straight registration, and it has its problems. And there's performance, and it has its problems. Well, give us two columns. Give us one for straight registration and one for performance. It allows the public a more user-friendly interface, more or less, to be able to see what's going on. The, again, I mentioned the executive summary. Would be a really great way to just pull that down and see what's going on. We've got folks who have come to me and said they want to get on MapTitude and start playing with these district lines and give you some ideas. Well, the new lines are not on MapTitude yet. I'm told they'll be up there tomorrow. But for the next 30 days, that's what people that I'm speaking with want to do. It's great that folks are coming to you asking for greater competitiveness. Of course, we like that. We also understand that y'all need specifics. So help us, help you, help us, help the state. May give you some specifics. Thanks.
Thank you. Gene McDermott, followed by, looks like Polo Martinez.
My name is Gene McDermott, G-E-A-N-C-M-D-E-R-M-O-T-T. And I'm representing myself, and I'd like to thank you for all the time and effort that you're putting in. I know it's a hard job to please everyone. I'm concerned about the district 28. And my position is about 14th Street in Maryland. And I'm concerned with legislative district in particular is that I don't feel that, do not have a connection feeling with Paradise Valley or Arcadia. I consider more, my home and my interests and where I do is more north-central, with Madison School District. And for the last 10 years, we've been in 11, but all the years before that, we were with north-central area. And I feel much more connected with that area. And that's my concern, that I would prefer to be back in with the district of, considered north-central, which would be west of 51 in the area. And just have more common with it. And I shop in central Phoenix, north Phoenix. My grandchildren have gone to Madison School District. My interests are with the Irish Community Center and the Phoenix Art Museum, and I don't go to Paradise Valley or to Scottsdale or Arcadia. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you. Next is Polo Martinez, followed by Francisco Avalos.
Good evening. Thank you, Commissioners, staff, and everyone in the audience. I was born and raised in New Mexico.
Sir, could you state and spell your name, please?
Sure. Polo Pioelo Martinez. I was born and raised in New Mexico, but I've retired here in Arizona, although I get back to New Mexico frequently. And perhaps, if you're that kind of an individual going back and forth between the two states, you recognize how very different they are. As I live here in Arizona, sometimes, as both a Hispanic and a Democrat, I feel very disenfranchised. However, I'm told that those who are optimistic live a longer life. So I'm constantly looking for reasons to be optimistic. I'm encouraged by a recent vote of yours of 4-1 that says we will proceed with the options that we have identified now in trying to get to the best delineation of districts that we possibly can. That 4-1 vote, to me, is similar to, it's a metaphor for what the Supreme Court does. You can always count on them coming up with 5-4 decisions, and you know, oh, what's that going to mean? You know, we're in trouble. It could go 5-4 either way. When you see a 6-3 or 7-2 vote, you start feeling very confident that even if you were on the losing side, there's probably some reasons that you missed that say, hey, that decision is the way it should in fact be. That's the feeling I see when I look at a 4-1 or a 5-0 vote. So I heartily encourage you to continue with your 4-1 and 5-0 endeavors. It makes all of us, Democrats and Republicans, I think, take heart that based on those elements that you see in arriving at your decisions have convinced you, through power of reason and logic, to come up with the option that you select. Now, I'd like to speak to only one of those issues of the six that you consider, and that has to do with what many others have been talking about here, and that's competitiveness. I feel that, as much as you may want one neighborhood in another, the convenience and the closeness and proximity of mutual interests, that the element of competitiveness is so important because it allows people in those particular districts to come forward with ideas and to battle on the basis of ideas and not on givens, not on assumptions that based on the demographics that we have here, we can therefore go forward without making reasonable, hard, logical arguments to persuade people to come up to the decisions that we want them to come up with. So as a footnote, the more competitive the districts can be, the more uniform and unified you can be in thrusting forward with your decisions, the more confident and more optimistic, and therefore more long-living, I can be. Thank you.
Thank you. Francisco Avalos, followed by Wes Harris.
Good afternoon. My name is Francisco Avalos. That's F-R-A-N-C-I-S-C-O. Last name is A-V-A-L-O-S. And I live in the 32nd Street and Thomas Road area, south of Arcadia. Mr. Vice Chair, Member of the Commission, I come before you to thank you for all the hard work you've put into creating the congressional and legislative maps. I think the commission drew congressional district seven in a way that would meet the Voting Rights Act, and people in our district are grateful for that. I stand before you today, however, to make one suggestion that I hope you will take into consideration when drawing the final map. I live in a neighborhood that was taken out of congressional district seven. I don't know why it was taken out, but I know that this is why the commission has asked the public to come out and let you know about our concerns with the draft maps. I wanted to request that the commission adjust congressional district seven so that Thomas Road remains as the boundary, at least between 32nd Street and 48th Street. In taking my neighborhood out of district seven and putting me into district nine, you include me with the Arcadia neighborhood, Tempe, Owatuki, and Chandler. My neighborhood has never been in the same district with those neighborhoods. I would just like to state that my neighborhood is a minority-majority area, low moderate income levels, and has a lot more in common with the rest of district seven, not nine. I care about my community, and I want to advocate what is best for its future representation. And for this reason, I would like to ask the commission to please place our neighborhood back into congressional district seven again. Again, the areas are 32nd Street, between 32nd Street and 48th Street, between Thomas Road and McDowell. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Wes Harris, followed by Robert Meza.
Good evening. That's Wes Harris, W-E-S-H-A-R-I-S. Mr. Vice Chair, Commissioners and staff, few have attended as many of these proceedings as I have. I was on hand when you held your first meeting, which was in a room not nearly large enough to house all that came. And I've been virtually every meeting in reasonable driving distance from Phoenix since, save the last two on this past weekend. Because of the requirements of the open meeting laws, these proceedings were far from efficient, and as such, far from interesting as well, due to a large amount of time spent adjusting lines on the screens. But at times, they were captivated by short periods of interesting and sadly, too many times petty and childish exchanges and ramblings by two of the members of this commission. Both have been interested only in the agenda at the detriment of the commission, the state, the citizens in the state, the constitution of the state and the nation. Nor has the chair been fair and independent, siding with the two Democrats on every vote of substance, including the unilaterally designed congressional district map that pleased only one segment of the voting population of this great state. And that segment is the minority-majority Democrats, more specifically, the Hispanic Coalition for Good Government, namely Representative Ed Pastor, Raul Gahlva, and Supervisor Mary Rose Wilcox. Regarding competitiveness, which seems to be an issue that everybody's talking about, let me share with you some of the mathematical statistics about the population of this state. Assuming a population of 6.5 million broken down into 36% Republicans, that's 2.3 million, 34% independents, which is 2.2 million, and 30% Democrats, which is 1.9 million, it is clear that the Democrat Party is the minority party in this state. Based on this breakdown of the map that existed on Friday, I did not see this map online, and it's still not up online, so I couldn't deal with the specifics of this current version of the legislative district map. The number of Democrats in the minority-majority districts equaled 795,000. So they're basically packed in those districts. To which you add another 109,000 Native Americans, for a total of 904,000, leaving just over a million to be spread to 23 different districts. This will give those districts a 2-1 ratio versus the independents and the Republicans. If split evenly through the rest of the state, this would equal only 45,000 Democrats in each of the remaining 23 districts, with populations of 210,000 per district, a clear minority. To achieve more Democrat-leaning districts would entail severe gerrymandering, which the chair has allowed Commissioner McNulty to do virtually single-handedly, indirect violation of what I think the preamble of Prop. 106, which precludes gerrymandering. To say that I'm unhappy with the outcome is putting it mildly. A comment from the chair sums it up, and I quote, "We cannot make everyone happy, and if I did make someone happy, then I should take back everything I gave them." That was a week ago. Well, the fact is that these maps only make one segment of the state happy, and that is the minority Democrats. Far too many and too much time was spent on the minority-majority districts, both congressional and legislative, to the detriment of the majority of the voters in the state. The people in Yuma wanted to be together and not a part of Tucson congressional district. Yet Representative Gahlva's interests won out over theirs. The Native Americans also expressed that they wanted all to be together in one district. And yet, again, Representative Gahlva's interests won out over theirs. The citizens of Fountain Hills wanted to be with their community of interest in Scottsdale. Yet they are now with Bullhead City. The citizens of my community in Moon Valley wanted to remain with their communities of interest north of North Mountain. Yet you have put them with those south of North Mountain. In short, this commission has been anything but independent and anything but fair and balanced. I'm almost done. It has made a travesty out of the openness and transparency. It has, in my opinion, abused its power, wasted tens of thousands of taxpayer money hiring controversial consultants and attorneys, hired an attorney to defend their questionable actions in court rather than answer a simple question posed by our taxpayer-funded Attorney General's Office, and elongated these proceedings to the benefit of the mapping consultant by virtue of what I think is an ill-conceived contract provision that was set up to make their contract competitive, which it will turn out to be terribly uncompetitive when this is over. The spirit of Proposition 106 was to provide a fair and balanced approach to redistricting. This commission has had a chance to be a true servant of the citizens of this state, and I submit you have failed miserably and let us all down for partisan reasons. There are two on this commission that I believe tried desperately to satisfy the spirit of Proposition 106, but there are three of you who have aborted those provisions terribly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Meza, followed by John Beulah.
Thank you, Commissioners. Robert Meza, M-E-Z-A. I just want to say what an excellent job you've done on the minority-majority districts, the four on the west side of Phoenix. They're excellent. Those are districts 19, 27, 29, and 30. The thing I do need to mention is that, under the Hispanic voting age population, if each of the districts of 19, 27, 29, and 30 fall below the 50% range, there might be a red flag with the Justice Department. But as is currently, they will pass the Justice Department test. And I just wanted to say, excellent job, and thank you for all your time. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
John Beulah, followed by... John Bealoo, followed by Senator Steve Gallardo.
Just for the record, that was Representative Meza?
Good evening, Mr. Vice Chair and panel. It's John Beau, spelled B-E-A-U-L-I-E-U, first name is J-O-H-N. I'm Chair of the District 15 Democrats, and I represent the Democratic Party, which is D-E-M-O-C-R-A-T-I-C, not the Democrat Party. It's the first time I've really had a chance to look at the maps in printed form, and I'm excited to be part of the new CD9. And my only, I wouldn't say it's a criticism of the legislative district map, but I would like to see the boundary go back up to Indian School Road and run flat out to, which I believe is Pima Road. Let's check that real quick. So I'm having a little trouble following where it goes out to, no, to Alma School Road? No, that's incorrect. Sorry, I'm having a hard time reading the map. But anyway, I'd like to see that flattened out through 28 and 23 to bring us out to out to the Salt River part of the district, and to say that as a former Chair of the central Phoenix area, we'd be proud to bring in the people out in Fort McDowell and the Salt River Indian Reservations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, it works. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, Members of the Commission. Thank you for the opportunity to address you today. First of all, let me, for the record, my name is Senator Steve Gallardo, State Senator from District 13, southwest Phoenix. I'm here representing the minority coalition. We have been on the phone and looking online for the last 24 hours, talking back and forth. The actual coalition is still reviewing the actual map. We do, at least for the most part, understand that there are some recommendations that we are going to bring forward. What we'd like to do is be able to look at the entire state, working with Tucson representatives as well, to come before the Commission probably in the next week or so with some official recommendations throughout the state of Arizona in regards to many of the minority districts. We also want to be able to have an opportunity to, once we make those recommendations and have final analysis of the actual map, is be able to take a step backwards and start looking at it from a whole and see where could we make competitive districts if necessary. I mean, if, once we establish our minority districts, to be able to take a step back and say, hey, you know, by making this small little change, perhaps we can make one district more competitive than the current map. So that's one of the things we want to look at. So far, as Supervisor Wilcox also indicated, the districts were created, for the most part, for growth, and I think that's important to be able to look at, not only for 2012, but for the next 10 years. How are these districts going to look like? And try to project that. I know that's kind of difficult, but we try to do our best to project for at least the next 10 years. So we're taking that into consideration as well. But we do hope to be able to come with a list of some recommendations to the Commission in regards to minority districts, and hopefully, some recommendations and possible changes for the purposes of competitiveness as well. So with that, I want to thank the Commission for their hard work. I monitored online over the last, particularly the last three weeks or so, but monitored quite often online, and I do want to thank the Commission for their hard work. I know it's not an easy task. Been there, done that several times there at the county, so I understand the difficulties and hope that at the end of the day, we'll have a map that is fair for the entire state of Arizona, and thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. Judy Whitehouse, followed by John Haire.
Hi, it's good to see you again. I've testified before, and I've expressed my appreciation to both Vice Chairs and Commissioner McNulty, and I'm sorry the other two aren't here, but hopefully I'll see them before you are done with your work. I do appreciate everything you've done.
And Ms. Whitehouse, could you state your name and spell it for the record?
Oh, yes. It's Judy, J-U-D-Y, Whitehouse, W-H-I-T-E-H-O-U-S-E. And I hope also that you appreciate the level of citizen participation and input that you've had, because I think it's been outstanding. I've heard personally so many really good comments to help you with your work. My involvement in this process comes from my involvement in election fairness issues. I have been an inspector at the polls, I've been working with election integrity groups to make sure that all people have a chance to vote if they're eligible and that their vote is counted accurately. That's important, but so is this process that you're doing right now, because without drawing lines that reflect our Arizona population, which is about one-third Republican, one-third Democrat, one-third Independent, if you draw lines that disrespect the independents because they're all safe Republican and Democratic districts, that to me is not fair. And even though I belong to a party, I don't want unfair races. I want fair, competitive races. And since this process is to set legislative boundaries for the state legislature, that is what we should be concentrating on as communities of interest that speak to the state legislature. Cities and counties and school boards have their own boundaries. They have their own communities of interest. They do not affect what we should have for our legislature. Same with our congressional boundaries. Competitiveness that takes into account the one-third Independent, one-third Democrat, one-third Republican, give or take, is what we should be doing to make sure that our congressional representatives represent Arizona and not just a few. So I'm glad that maybe we'll get some better input so that we can evaluate this and give you some more specific directions, but that is what I would ask of you. And I know you're doing the best job you can. I appreciate all the work, and I appreciate all my fellow citizens for their work, too.
Thank you. John Haire, followed by Phyllis Rowe. It very well could be. It is.
Before my time begins, I'd like to comment on your input. I came early to sign in. The signing sheets, there were only these blue comment forms to fill out. I filled out one. It wasn't until you told us we had to fill out a yellow comment form, which were not on the table for me to be able to speak. On the other hand, although I did come early, I had a chance to listen to all the other people. So now let me begin. Commissioners, staff, fellow citizens, my name is John Hines, H-I-N-Z. I'm a senior citizen and a native of Phoenix. Welcome to Phoenix College. My alma mater. I'm disappointed. Before I say that, my condolences, no matter what you do, you're going to get complaints. But nonetheless, I am disappointed. This is the shirt I wore while I was gathering signatures to create this Commission, because I was so dissatisfied with the politicians gerrymandering their own districts. From the last redistricting, how much better do we do? Well, if I don't vote in the primary, there's no sense in me voting, because that's where the person's elected. We're getting, with some nice exceptions, we're getting the most extreme of the most extreme, representing us in the legislature. And I firmly reject the notion that only someone of my ethnicity can properly represent me. I am of European extraction. Some of the sleaziest politicians are of European extraction. One of my best representatives is Art Hamilton, who happens to be of African heritage. So I completely reject that. I would point out that I agree with most of the speakers, we do need competitiveness. You will see on the shirt here, better seen on the back perhaps, we have compact, mostly rectangular districts. I would urge you to work more towards that than this gerrymandered whatever. I would also suggest that, yes, Republicans have a majority, give them one district and let the other eight be competitive. This was much easier when Carl Hayden was our only representative, represented the whole state. It wasn't much harder when Rhodes and Udall represented all of us. But now that we've got nine, boy, you've got to really move those lines around. But I would plead as long with everybody else. It isn't someone represented me who makes a difference in the legislature. It's the entire composition of the legislature, who probably will vote against my own representative no matter what his ethnicity is. So I wish, I would urge you more to consider that and to make them more competitive. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Phyllis Rowe, followed by Steve Moratori.
I'm Phyllis Rowe.
Get that microphone right.
Okay, I'm Phyllis Rowe, P-H-Y-L-L-I-S, and my last name is R-O-W-E. This is the fifth redistricting that I have been through since I've lived in Phoenix, and I've commented on several of them, and I think you've done a remarkably good job. You've gotten the numbers so that they're pretty, they're similar. The last one had some districts that extended all the way across Maricopa County almost, and they were very hard for the candidates to navigate. I'm concerned about the commonality of the new districts, and I was hoping that perhaps the district that I was looking at particularly was District 28. And I'd like to see it end at Central Avenue, where there is a difference from the east to the west there. And also, I would like to see it go just south of Camelback Road, perhaps, to Highland, rather than all the way down to Indian School Road. This way, you could have the Arcadia area all together. And I urge you to take the school districts into consideration also, because when you go over the school districts, it seems to create a problem. Now, I ran for the legislature three times, and each time it was in a different district. The districts change, and I know that you've got the problem of doing the districts in this. I think you've done a remarkably good job, considering all the ones that I've testified before. These are compact districts, and I think you've done a good job there. And I thank you very much for your service, and I hope you'll consider changing District 28 slightly. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Moratori, followed by Rosie Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Steve Moratori. I publish the online blog, The Arizona Eagleterian. As you know, I'm concerned that the district maps you give us for the next year, 10 years, are made according to Prop 106 mandate, requiring you to draw fair and competitive districts. The draft maps you have adopted do not meet that constitutional requirement necessarily. The congressional map provides four safe districts for Republicans and only two for Democrats, and those two happen to be the voting rights districts. And arguably, only three districts are competitive. This is, in my opinion, an unacceptable lack of compliance with the Arizona Constitution. In addition, where I live on the Salt River Pima-Maricopa Indian Community has been drawn into a very heavily Republican district that, if left as is, disenfranchises me and my neighbors for the next 10 years. To me, this is intolerable. I have shown you where I live during the previous meetings and believe it is critical for you to correct this oversight. As to the legislative draft map, the most optimistic view, as I could tell from looking at the competitiveness report, is that only eight districts were even close to being competitive. Eight is not enough. I obtained from redistricting expert Tony Sisson, pursuant to news items he had published in 2010, background for his assertion that more than 10 legislative districts could more easily than not be made competitive. A map that I presented to you on Sunday in Tempe and which I have posted on The Arizona Eagleterian shows at least 12 competitive districts can be drawn, because outside of Maricopa County, nearly equal number of voters are registered Democrat as opposed to Republican, Democratic. Therefore, I assert that you are legally required to provide substantively more competitive districts than the three to eight, depending on the index used to measure, would result from this draft legislative map. As I have watched the process closely over the last year, I very much appreciate the personal sacrifices that each of you have made, and I respect all of you tremendously in the hard work you have put into the process. I am confident, however, that on these maps, you can and must do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Rosie Lopez, followed by Esther Duran-Lung.
Good evening. My name is Rosie Lopez, R-O-S-I-E-L-O-P-E-Z, and this is my third time here testifying. And I want to thank the Commission, first of all, for all their good work in keeping all the different communities of interest together. I think you've done a great job, especially in District 16, where I am currently living, known as your proposed District 27. I want to speak on Isaac, rather, the district, what is it, 13 and 14? I'm not sure which one it is. I think it's 29 and 19. I lived in Isaac School District for 44 years, and I know what the district looks like, and I know what the commonalities are in communities of interest. But I do also know that the historic districts are not in line with that area, and there are no commonalities there. And I would urge you to remove the historic district from those areas, because I know that they are not the same. They don't have communities of interest. And the other thing is, I would urge you to also take a hard look at Buckeye, Litchfield, Luke Air Force Base, and those districts, District 29 and 19. I also feel that we have no commonalities there. I cannot speak for Tucson, but I also see Litchfield there, and I think it's kind of strange that District Three would be part of, Litchfield would be part of District Three for the congressional district. As I say, I don't speak for Tucson, I don't live in Tucson, I live in south Phoenix, so I cannot say too much about it, but it just kind of perked me up on that one, and I hope that you take a hard look at that. Now, in regards to my congressional district, currently District Four, and your proposed District Seven, I would ask the Commission to consider removing Bethany Home Road and Northern Avenue between those areas and 43rd and 7th Avenue. There are no commonalities there either, and especially with historic Gilndale and areas south of Bethany Home Road. And I would also ask you to consider adding, as Mr. Avalos stated this evening, the areas from 32nd Street and 48th, and McDowell and Thomas. I think those districts, those areas have been, have communities of interest there with us, and I ask you to consider adding them back. Thank you so much. I appreciate your hard work. Thank you. Thank you so much, I appreciate your hard work, and I know it's a lot of work, but I thank you so much for allowing us to speak here tonight, and I hope that you take my recommendations into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Esther Duran Lum, followed by Mike Stevens.
Thank you. First of all, thank you to all of the Commission and everyone involved with these maps. I sure wouldn't want to be in your shoes. I think you've worked really hard, and we do appreciate it, especially the chance to give you our input. I'm here representing, my name is Esther, E-S-T-H-E-R, the last name is Lum, L-U-M-M. I'm here representing myself. I've been a precinct committee person since I moved into the Litchfield Park area that is not actually the city of Litchfield Park, but it's part of the Dreaming Summit that's north of Camelback. I'm looking at your maps, where you have now put our neighborhood into legislative District 13, and if you turn it sideways, it looks really cute, almost like Felix the Cat, with two little gerrymandered peaks there that you could make it look like a cat. But I don't know why people think that Dyzer Road is the magic western boundary. It should actually be Litchfield Park Road, Litchfield Road, I'm sorry. You didn't do it to District 19, you stayed straight up with Litchfield Road, but then when you got just above Indian School, that's where you went in, back to Dyzer Road. I can tell you that, being a precinct committee person there, that we have absolutely nothing in common with anything west of Luke Air Force Base. There's a lot of business there, there's a lot of empty lots, and then there's a lot of, like, Verado, which we have absolutely nothing in common with, but we have a lot in common, where we shop, everything that we do is with District 29. So we would very much appreciate it if you would just kind of scoot that line back over to Litchfield Road, between Indian School on the south and Northern on the north, and just scoot it out to Litchfield Road where it really makes more sense in terms of commonality, communities of interest. And just wanted to briefly mention one other thing. I've heard some comments about some of the minorities having too much of their way. The fact is that if you look at the population and what representation we should have, and I'm speaking here as a Latina, we really don't even get as many districts as we should. So I thank you for what you have done, and we should actually have more, both congressionally and legislatively. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mike Stevens, followed by Sherri Williams.
Good evening, and thank you, members of the Commission. My name's Mike Stevens, M-I-K-E-S-T-E-V-E-N-S, sorry, better. I live in Mesa right now, but I am actually an Arizona native. I've lived here my entire life, and I don't know if that gives me any more credibility, but I'll throw it out there. In my time here in Arizona, I've actually lived pretty much in every area of the Phoenix metropolitan area, North Phoenix, South Phoenix, Central, Mesa, Tempe, Glendale. And so as such, when I really started following the redistricting process, I got pretty excited. You know, the last 10 years, we've had a pretty lopsided legislative, at least locally, legislative districts, and so I got excited at the chance of something that would truly reflect the real demographics of the state, where we are closer to a third Republican, a third Democrat, a third Independent. So suffice it to say, I am a little disappointed in the maps as they stand right now. 2008, we had five of eight seats congressionally, controlled by Democrats. Today, we have six of eight controlled by Republicans. And I show that, I think that sort of demonstrates, actually, we had a lot of competitiveness at the congressional level. Now, despite the fact that we've gained a congressional district, we seem to have taken a step back there, where only three of those congressional districts are competitive. But my real concern is actually with the legislative maps. With 50% basically of these legislative districts being controlled by Republicans, which would make sense if 50% of the state was registered Republican, that creates a really daunting thing, where essentially, months before the election has ever had, Republicans know, and voters know, that Republicans will control the House, they will control the state senate, and that does put us in sort of a situation where if you're not a Republican, if you're a Democrat, or if you're an Independent who leans to the left, the only thing you have to look forward to over the next 10 years is the hope that somehow Democrats can win majorities in those six competitive legislative districts. And that won't give you good government, and that won't win you a productive government. It'll give you a gridlock government. We're kind of living, looking at a 10-year situation where the best, if you're not a Republican, that you have to hope for is gridlock. And that doesn't speak very well to competitiveness in a state where it really is a third Republican, a third Democrat, and a third Independent. Thank you.
Thank you. Sherri Williams, followed by Laura Koppel.
Good evening. My name is Sherri Williams, S-H-E-R-R-Y, B as in boy, Williams, W-I-L-L-I-A-M-S. Thank you for the opportunity to give my comments. Good is not good enough when great is an option. You have the opportunity to do something great, not only in Arizona, but in this nation. I live in what is currently Legislative District 15, which now is the proposed LD24, which is a joke. We have all the tools and all the technology. We can do better. We deserve better. What if partisan politics were put aside? What if you simply did the right thing? What if the Arizona Redistricting Committee, Commission would set the standard for our nation in fairness on redistricting? What if you, the Arizona Redistricting Commission, would put on the cloak of justice and put the interests of all Arizonans front and center? What if you could show our youth that Arizona is not crazy? What if you would take advantage of this teachable moment? What if we took advantage of all of the resources that we have, so that the future, our young people, they would actually know that we're concerned about what happens in the future? Your goal is to maximize competitiveness and fairness. What if you actually did what you were commissioned to do? What if you came up with real competitive districts? What if you cared about Arizonans having real representation? What if you did all this? It would allow citizens to be fairly representative. You would break the chains of unfairness. You would set the tone for all commissions in this nation. You would actually make history in a positive way for Arizona for a change. You would all be heroes and sheros. However, if you don't break the cycle of unfairness, you will continue to threaten democracy as we know it. But what if you truly did what you were commissioned to do? You would have an opportunity to do the right thing. This is the time. It's now. It's not 10 years from now. We deserve better. Remember, good is not good enough when great is an option. We have all the tools we need to do what needs to be done. Thank you for your time, and thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Laura Koppel, followed by Andy Gonzalez.
Good evening, Laura, L-A-U-R-A, Koppel, C-O-P-P-L-E. I want to thank the Commission in giving us all this opportunity to enter our comments into the public record. I spoke to you on Friday in Tempe, but I want to go into a little bit more detail about the 2009 ruling by the Arizona Supreme Court regarding competitiveness. And before that time, and I know you all know this, but we have people behind me who don't seem to value competitiveness in terms of the criteria set out by the redistricting law of 2000. So I'd like to read what the Justice said about competitiveness. "The direction that competitiveness should be favored unless one of two conditions occurs does not, contrary to the Commission's assertion, mean that the competitiveness goal is less mandatory than the other goals, can be ignored or should be relegated to a secondary role." The constitutional language means what it says. "The Commission should favor creating more competitive districts to the extent practicable when doing so does not cause significant detriment to the other goals." Practicable means can be put into practice. It does not mean practical, or if we choose to. When must the Redistricting Commission consider competitiveness? And according to Justice Hurwitz, he says, "Delaying consideration inevitably threatens to relegate the competitiveness goal to precisely the secondary role that the court correctly abjures." I agree with much of what has been said here tonight, and favor more competitive, both congressional and legislative districts, especially the legislative districts seem to be way out of balance right now, and just want to go on record saying that I think this is your moment. I loved what Ms. Williams had to say about doing great things here for the next 10 years for all Arizonans. Appreciate this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Andy Gonzalez, followed by Randall Holmes.
Hello. My name is Andy Gonzalez, A-N-D-Y-G-O-N-Z-A-L-E-S, from historic Glendale, and I'm representing myself. Madam Chair, members of the Commission, come before you today to thank you all for all the hard work and for keeping our community in Glendale within Congressional District 7. We have a lot of commonality with other communities in this district, South Phoenix, Maryvale, Levine, Guadalupe, and Tolleson, and feel best represented when our communities are all together. I would just like to suggest to the Commission that it make a small alteration in its draft map. I don't think that the areas north of Bethany Home Road and east of 43rd Avenue are similar to the communities I just mentioned. So I think it would be best if 43rd Avenue and Bethany Home Road remain the boundaries in northeast area of Congressional District 7. Thank you, Commissioners, for all your hard work thus far. You're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Randall Holmes, followed by Scott Sari.
Hi, folks. Sorry we all couldn't be here tonight, excuse me. I spoke to you before about competitiveness, and it's still the top of my list for priorities. First of all, a little history, there may be a few people left who don't know the origin of the word gerrymander. It was originally pronounced gerrymander, named after Elbridge Gerry, one of our founding fathers, who managed to draw himself a district in Massachusetts that someone remarked was shaped like a salamander, thus gerrymander. When a district is drawn to sacrifice compactness in favor of favoring one candidate, or one party, or faction, or the other, that's what we call a gerrymander. I guess Mr. Gerry managed to draw himself a district that favored his own election, or something like that. When you sacrifice compactness in favor of competitiveness, that is not a gerrymander. And I guess the word has been tossed around kind of loosely. You can call that a salamander district, but you can't call it a gerrymander district. As far as communities of interest goes, we have to think about the word interest and what we call the public interest, excuse me, as opposed to special interests, private interests, regional parochial interests. And we all have conflicts of interest, we all have interests we hold dear, both the general public interest as well as our personal interest, and we have to balance those competing interests. But I still maintain that all interests are best served when the public interest is served. And if the legislature is truly competitive, then all interests are better served, because all legislators have to compete for your vote. I am one of the most partisan Democrats you'll ever meet, and I don't care what Senator Joseph McCarthy called our party, and is still done today, and the reptilian party can call us whatever they want, I don't care. It's trivial, it's a weapon of mass distraction, let's not waste time on that. But I would rather have 30 districts that are competitive, and I would rather not have even one district that was a safe Democratic district, because getting enough Democrats to make one district safe takes Democrats away from the other districts, and I want all districts to be competitive. That's my ideal, and whatever of that we have to sacrifice, so be it. But all interests is best served when the public interest is served. Thanks.
Thank you. Scott Sari, and then Dennis Burke.
Council members in council, and Mr. Herter, as a former court reporter, I can speak to the legendary reputation of your court reporter, and I feel good about the record that you have him here.
Just make sure you state and spell your name.
Thank you. The name is Scott, last name is Sari, S as in Sam, A-A-R-I. I've been a resident of Arizona since 1982, when I came to go to ASU as a music student under a full teaching assistantship. And after I graduated with my degree from classical guitar, I struggled to make a living in teaching, including here at Phoenix College, and I actually performed a concerto on this stage, so it's a special room for me. But I'm fairly newly active in politics, and I'm afraid I don't understand the technical nature of the maps that you're trying to draw, but I do appreciate the difficulty that you're under here. And I've also been dismayed to hear that you've had to be distracted by what I think is a frivolous investigation that really has no basis but intimidation. And I feel like this intimidation spirit is what's dominating politics in Arizona, and I'm totally against it. It's something we have to fight as a people, and I understand you have a lot of goals to achieve, but to me, nothing is more important than our democracy, and nothing is more important to democracy than fairness of legislative maps. And that means they have to be competitive. Otherwise, there will be no way, and no hope for either party, or for both parties to really compete, and we just cannot afford to have that kind of politics in our country as we preach to the rest of the world the virtues of democracy. It's really important that we practice what we preach here, and it comes down to this level, I feel, and I appreciate your work, but I really feel like I represent a lot of people who don't usually get involved in this kind of thing, as one who's new to it, to say that. The ones that don't have a voice are the ones that really have to be protected too, and I think everybody would agree that competitiveness is the primary consideration, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Dennis Burke, followed by Bill Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Dennis Michael Burke, B-U-R-K-E. With Bart Turner and Ann Asting here, a dozen years ago, I was one of the people who drafted the program and asked the citizens to approve it, and so I would like to thank you for your service, but also apologize for the many abuses to your time and sensibilities that we may have brought upon you. Regarding competitiveness, I would like to suggest a mental touchstone that might be useful to you, and that is that every vote should count, and every Arizonan should feel that their vote counts, and that means- And that means that as many contests as possible should be decided at the general level, not at the primary level. And to the extent that you can do that without creating a map that looks like lizards wrestling is, is the project. Also, we vote as individuals and we vote as members of communities. That also is a challenge for balance. But if you will keep in mind, as sort of a democratic, and I would say big D, democracy ideal, we want as many Arizonans as possible to think that their vote counts. That's, that's the essence of democracy. So competitiveness is not meant to be a second-tier value at all in this process. We just hope that you can do it, and we trust that you can do it with some, honoring some of these other values as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bill Rowe.
Thank you very much. I'm Bill Rowe, B.I.L.L.R.O.E., from Tucson, Pima County, Southern Arizona. And I want to thank you, as everyone else has. I've been to a lot of these, I know how much time you're spending on them. I've played with the lines a lot, and I understand the difficulty. Every time you change something, it's like a waterbed mattress. You punch here and it jumps up somewhere else every single time you change something. I could come and ask you to adjust the line in my neighborhood. The new line cuts right across my Neighborhood Association for the Legislative District, and I know several similar things, but that's really not very important when you look at a bigger picture. And I'm very, very concerned about representation for Southern Arizona, for Tucson, and I'm pleased that the map, the legislative map now, does not take the opportunity to cut out representation for Southern Arizona. I think it is incredibly important that we have competitive districts in Southern Arizona. I think it is particularly important for the University of Arizona to have strong delegation protecting it in the entire university system. The universities in this state are incredibly important economic drivers. The business community recognizes that, and we need to have districts set up. You've heard the same thing, I think, from Flagstaff in particular, but we've got to have districts that will affect and support our university system and our K-12 system. We cannot have a successful business community here, a successful business environment, without that. So thank you very much. Continue your good work and good luck with your waterbed.
Well, thank you, that. We have one more. Kenneth Jones.
My name is Kenneth Jones. That's Kenneth, I think everyone knows how to spell that, J.O.N.E.S. I'm here on behalf of myself, and I would like to thank the Commissioners for all your work. You've been given a pretty thankless task, but I think you deserve thanks. I'm here to speak in support of the Legislative District boundaries as proposed for the West Valley, West Phoenix, Avondale, and Southwest Goodyear, which, and the proposed map includes District 19, 29, 21, 20, and 30. Competitiveness is important, but I'm pleased to see that these maps are largely rectangular, but obviously due to how city boundaries zigzag and don't necessarily follow bright lines like 43rd Avenue, Bethany Home Road, Dyers Art Road, et cetera, are still basically rectangles. And keep these cities contiguous and compact, and will allow maximal representation for those cities, allow Avondale for once to elect possibly, you know, a city count, a representative or a senator. And due to the growth, say, in Glendale, it'll maximize their ability to elect two or three or four or five House members and, you know, three senators. And of course, we have had huge Hispanic growth in the West Valley, in that same area, and I am happy to see that these districts have been included as part of the minority-majority district proposals, you know, for the legislature. However, I do propose some changes slightly, and I had a quick map, I made copies for each of you. The area immediately south of my district, I'll hurry this along, District 29, Wigwam Creek, which you guys were referring to as Wigwam Creek South, and the Rio Crossing Neighborhood, are actually in the city of Avondale, and I believe they should be taken from District 29 and moved into District 19. That moves 4,859 people, and I was up until 6 o'clock this morning playing with the numbers, by moving the community immediately to our west of Dyers Art Road, known as Dreaming Summit, north of the Culture Creek Wash. That would move 4,877 people back into District 29 as proposed, and that actually is still a good fit for us because both my HOA, which is known as Wigwam Creek North, and the Dreaming Summit community are within Glendale's annexation easement and in fact are currently attached by territory within the actual city of Glendale at the intersection of Glendale Avenue and Dyers Art Road. So even though it looks gerrymandered, as I drew it here, like I said, I did a map, it fits. This narrow area south of Maryland Avenue, all the way down to Camelback Road, and the homes south of the Wigwam Creek, excuse me, the Culture Creek Wash, these are all custom-built homes on quarter acre, half acre, and one acre lots. So they share a commonality, and that leaves that area south of Maryland down to Camelback bounded on the east by 129th Avenue within District 13. That moves 912 people over out of District 29 into proposed District 13. It also keeps those people with a Litchfield Park mailing address, which they currently have. And since both of our two areas, Dreaming Summit and Wigwam Creek, are within Glendale's annexation easement, we will eventually be annexed by Glendale as required when the legislature sort of fixed, if you recall, a couple of years ago when we had the problems with strip annexation. The cities are now required to annex contiguous parcels as they expand outward, and both of our parcels would have to be annexed next. So it would be a good fit to have Dreaming Summit drawn into a proposed District 29. Thank you very much for your time, and good luck the rest of the month.
And if you want to give your map to our executive director, thanks.
Just wanted to make sure I don't pick up some other people's stuff here.
That was my last request to speak for him. If there's anyone else, anyone out there who has completed a form and would like to address the Commission, please raise your hand. All right then. Well, that concludes our public comment. Thanks to everyone for coming out and providing us with your insights. Thanks to Phoenix College for hosting. Before we adjourn, I'd like to turn it over to my fellow Commissioners to see if they have anything to say before we, we close out here tonight.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for your, your precise input dealing with the maps and your particular concerns. It's a very important process, and the input of citizens like you and the kind of input we heard tonight is extremely helpful. Thank you.
You know, I think I've said this numerous times, that this is probably my favorite part of the, of being in the Redistricting Commission, is coming and listening to people speak about the maps and how we should either move them, keep them the same, or things that we've done wrong, things that we've done well, and that this is, this is fun. I really enjoy that, and I appreciate you being here tonight instead of being home with your families or watching TV. We will be in Payson, I think, tomorrow, and I, I would appreciate if you have family members that live in the area or nearby that they care about this process, invite them to attend, whether competitiveness is important to them or other criteria. I think we should have the public participating at each one, and so encourage your family members, friends to attend, all of them if possible. So thank you so much. Have a good night.
Thanks. That's right. We'll be in Payson tomorrow night, Flagstaff on Thursday, what day is it? On Thursday. Window Rock, Arizona on Friday. On Saturday, we'll be up in Eager, Springerville in the morning, and then in the afternoon we'll be at Honda, just outside of Pinetop. And beyond that, I'm not exactly sure, but if you go to our website and you'll see the entire schedule laid out for the next three weeks. Okay, folks, thanks everyone for coming. Have a good evening. We'll adjourn the meeting at 8:14.
Thank you.